Welcome, everybody. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone, and I know people from Honolulu to Harbor Springs, Michigan, are watching us, so I'd like to welcome them. And then, at this time, I'm just going to take a little change in the agenda, if you don't mind, and turn it over to our Clerk, Martin Brook, for a special announcement.
I'd just like to make a quick motion to amend the agenda, to add new item number one, which is to consider the adoption of a resolution honoring Tom Hayes for earning his certificate, Certified Municipal Clerk designation.
Second. We have support. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved.
Great. So, we've done a little surprise for Tom. I had to make that amendment because Tom prepares the agenda, and Tom sits here with us. We all know Tom. He works very hard to help ensure that the board functions properly, and all the notices are done, and everything's done on time and properly. All the i's crossed and t's crossed and i's dotted. And in addition to all of that, Tom helps to operate and run elections in the township, and so many other things. Tom and I, see, this is my second term. It's sort of like Tom's second term, too. You know, I was first elected to this position in November of 2020, and Tom started the same week I did. And so, together, he and I have learned what it is to work in a clerk's office, and to develop our expertise. And Tom has actually recently been awarded the Certified Municipal Clerk designation. It is a rigorous process that requires a lot of work, and he puts in that work on everything he does, including in earning this certificate. I want to mention that there's presently one other person in my office who has a CMC designation. That is our Deputy Clerk, Deana Mondock. And she's not here today because her daughter just gave birth to, so she's a new grandmother again. So, let me read this designation that Deana and I prepared secretly, so Tom wouldn't know. And this is what it says. Whereas the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees wishes to recognize and commend Thomas "Tom" Edward Hayes the 10th -- yes, he's the 10th -- with us here is the 9th, Administrative Assistant to the Clerk's Office for his outstanding professional accomplishment. And whereas Tom has successfully completed the rigorous requirements required to earn the distinction of Certified Municipal Clerk, or a CMC, awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And whereas the Certified Municipal Clerk program enhances the performance of clerk and their staff in communities of all sizes by emphasizing professional development, education, and experience. And whereas achieving this prestigious designation requires both significant experience in municipal government and the completion of extensive education programs in partnership with institutions of higher learning and municipal clerk associations at the state and national level. And whereas the CMC designation prepares clerks and their staff to meet the evolving challenges of the profession. And whereas there are currently only 140 -- yeah, that's right, only 140 other people in the state of Michigan have earned the CMC, which is an indication of the significance of this designation. And whereas by attaining this certification, Tom has demonstrated his dedication, professionalism, and his commitment to public service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees formally recognizes and congratulates Tom Edward Hayes the 10th on this significant milestone, and extends its sincere appreciation for his continued service to the residents of Bloomfield Township. Any support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, I just want to also say that Tom, by the way, is a joy to work with. We're happy to have him in the office. And congratulations, Tom, on accomplishment of this great designation. And keep on truckin', okay? More to -- there's a, I think there's like a senior CMC or something like that. So, and Tom, you want to maybe go to the microphone a quick second? He has some visitors here with him. This was a surprise, by the way, he, which was --
Well, I am certainly surprised at the proclamation that the board prepared, and it's certainly an honor to work for the township and with you all. And with me tonight is my girlfriend, Allison, my mother, Claudia, and my father, Tom. I appreciate that they traveled all this way to visit the board tonight, and congra -- wow. But, but thank you very much. And to my coworkers, Sean and Katerina, and my boss, Martin, and Deana, they're all a pleasure to work with.
Thank you, Tom, and congratulations. Great work. Thank you. So, next on the agenda, we'll open it up to public comment. If you're here to speak about any issue, if you've come up to the podium on my right your left, and we'll give you three minutes. If you keep it within three minutes, we'd appreciate it. And so, it's an open microphone now, if you'd like to come up and be heard.
I'm just going to read off here.
Sure.
Yes.
And to state your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm Marcy Duschner, 6924 Cedarbrook, Bloomfield Hills, 48301.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm here to speak in opposition to the current Robertson Homes development. I live in Birmingham Farms. Residents have spoken at prior township meetings, and they've also met with Robertson Homes, but our voices have not been heard. This proposal is incredibly dense, and not in line with Bloomfield's master plan or strategic initiatives. And Bloomfield residents have communicated that less density is a priority. And with that, we feel it widely deviates from the nature and spirit of the recent Oakland County Millage that passed in November 2024. And it does not solve the problem of green space for our community, because previously the booth school land was swapped, traded, or given to a much more affluent community than ours. So, this is the last green space that's available or left in our community. And we have a sub of 367 residents that should not be forgotten, or left for this space to go to a condo development, with two to three houses per backyard that back up into this. And we have 29 homes that border this space. On one side of the street, there's another 29, so you say 30, 60 homes. You have other streets, such as Spruce and Glen Grove. That's definitely another well over 60, 70 homes that are directly affected, be it Sandalwood, White Pine, Spruce, and so forth. And these areas need to be considered. They're not receiving notification. A lot of them don't even know this is going on. And a lot of these areas are also much lower level than ours up on Cedarbrook. We are higher when it comes in terms of sewage and some of the water issues that we're all very much concerned about as well. To further summarize, I would like to say that I do not support this, but the numerous variance requests that came up in the meeting last week, we didn't have notice. Again, we showed up short-sighted to be there and to share our opposition to this. We also have a petition with almost 200 signatures, I think we're at 199, that we really don't want to see or lose this green space for our community. We don't like the way the plans are currently laid out. We are open to discussions, to meet and talk, and figure out a better way to handle this situation, if you will. But, again, it's too dense. This is not a Bloomfield property or Bloomfield Homes. From the meeting last week, this was the most dense property would be in all of Bloomfield. And it's just, I'm not clear why we'd even, we're even at this point with this property as it is, but that's where we're at. Right now, as example in that proposal, any green space would be over by telegraph or by a parking lot. It would be an exclusive gated community where we could look at it, but we won't be able to walk through it with our dogs, to bike or run. We are, we would be kept out from it. All of the more mature trees would be leveled and removed. There's nothing in there to --
Marcy, you're past the three minutes. Could you wrap it up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Lastly, I would just like to say, there's so much noise, congestion, and traffic already in that sub, it's very difficult to live there. Some days are peaceful, but mostly it's traffic, traffic accidents, and noise. It's very intense, and you stay inside. And with all of that, we would ask you to look at the selling property, and if they are financially viable, if this is a viable solution, if this is a long-term solution, will these properties sell? What does this mean if the financial --
Okay. Thank you, Marcy. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joan Danbar, and I'm from 7196 Glen Grove Drive, Bloomfield, in the Birmingham Farms subdivision. And I'm going to reiterate a lot of what Marcy has already told you. Again, we are on the west side of this proposed new development by Robertson Homes. And most of you are aware, and you've heard from now several people, that we have a number of challenges related to the high water table and the ineffective stormwater drainage. Now, this is, we are immediately adjacent to what the new homes will be. And these challenges currently present a safety risk for both people, cars, and they're quite a financial risk to the current residents. I think I mentioned earlier at another meeting that almost every house on our road, at least, has dual sump pumps, and have paid extensive amounts of money for extensive drainage around the homes. So, our concern now is really on the scope of the proposed development, the actual number of the renthouse condominiums, and also the density of the homes. And also attached to that is the number of variances that have been or will be required under the cluster housing ordinance. So, the summary is that any stormwater damage in this subdivision will be extremely detrimental to the Birmingham Farms residents, both on the north side, the west side, and also the adjacent streets. Now, Robertson have projected that the current design will not create any additional stormwater damage. However, they are also able to confirm that the grading on the west side of the proposed development, which is Glen Grove Drive, would actually be higher than the proposed development. They hesitated in telling us, and actually, it may, we may actually be lower. So, that will give rise to more drainage in our division. And we just can't accept that as either a near-term or a long-term solution. So, why it was recommended by the Design Board that Robertson provide a hydro-geographical survey, I really implore the board to be extremely diligent in the review of these issues, and consider the short-term and long-term implications for our subdivision. Robertson has also provided a landscaping design, which while attractive to the future residents of the proposed development, it in no way will replace the loss of privacy, the noise abatement, and the quality of life of the current neighborhood residents. So, we urge the Bloomfield Township Board and the subcommittees to take any necessary actions to protect the current residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Hi, Don Elder, 7145 Glen Grove. Been in Birmingham Farms for about 30 years. My parents moved into the township in 58, 1958, not 1858. So, we've been around for a while. So, I'm opposing the plan as well, the Robertson home development, as submitted. One, the variations to the master plan, which have already been mentioned. Two, the noise from telegraph. Telegraph between Cedarbrook and 14 Mile is kind of a low area. It's a bowl, okay? South of telegraph, south of telegraph, south of 14 Mile goes up a little, and it certainly goes up to Maple, trapping sound. On the east side is, I think it's called the glens of Bloomfield, and that has a 15-foot brick wall. Sound just bounces off that. We've been okay so far with 500 trees in the place where the development's going to go on. Many of those trees are over 100 feet tall. The proposal is to take all those trees out, including the 100-footers, and put a five-foot berm in. That's not going to work. All that noise is going to come back our way. That's not good for us. Also, wanted to talk a little bit more about drainage. It's already kind of been brought up before. I'm on Glen Grove. We have people's sump pumps that run every three and four minutes, 365 days a year. We have people that put sump pumps, two sump pumps in, battery backup, somebody has a whole-house generator to make sure they don't flood. We have water, standing water, in many of our ditches. Last Wednesday, before the Design Board meeting, we had a storm. Wet water flowed over Glen Grove. In the middle of the winter, when there's a thaw, say January and February, we often get water going over Glen Grove and going over White Pine right at Cedarbrook. If we get unlucky, and we have a freeze that night, there's a sheet of ice there. It's a skating rink, and there's a bus stop right there, too. We can't have more water. This is, this is a site cross-section. We met, I can, I don't think we can put it up on the screen there, but we met with Robertson. They invited us over March 19th. And this site cross-section shows that the houses, as mentioned, on Cedarbrook, on the north face of this development, are a little bit higher by about seven feet than the proposed development. That's not true on Glen Grove. We are below, according to their own map here, we are below them. All the water's headed our way. They've pulled out 500 trees. All those 500 trees no longer have a root system to pull water out of the ground. And we all know, if you stand under a heavy-leaved tree, you don't get wet from a rainstorm. They've pulled all the leaf trees out under this proposal. That surface water is headed back onto Glen Grove. Whether it's from a rainstorm, whether it's from a downspout, somebody's roof, we don't need more water. We just don't need more water. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Don.
Okay.
Hi, Stuart Harmon, 7094 Cathedral Drive. What the prior speakers have mentioned, I concur with. So, I just want to just emphasize the density aspect. Really nowhere do we have a proposal. You know, in this township, we just heard of houses being this close together. I mean, I don't want to belittle it, but it kind of seems like a trailer park. But, anyway, I think the township has a responsibility for the existing residents and the taxpayers to, to look at alternatives, to, to, if it's going to be developed, to have it in a much more consistent basis with other developments in the township. So, you know, much more green space, buffer between houses, much more than one little row of trees. So, you know, I live behind where the booth school had the development, but at least they preserve some green space. And they put in some grassy areas and other things. But this, this proposal doesn't do that. It crams as many houses in as it can, and eliminates tons of trees, green space. It's just going to, I think, degrade. It'll degrade the property values of all those people that, that border that, border that area. So, that's, that's not fair to those people. It should be consistent and maintain property values. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart.
If I'm redundant, I'm sorry. I got tied up by a medical thing.
Just your name and address.
I am Sylvia Hagan, and I live at 6934 Cedarbrook Drive.
Thank you.
In Birmingham Farms subdivision. I have lived in Bloomfield my, almost my entire life. And of course, I've seen lots and lots and lots of changes. That's okay, but they have to be consistent with what Bloomfield is. Bloomfield has historically been regarded as a very desirable place to live. Unfortunately, we are losing some of that ambience that makes it so special. I realize we're not going to be stagnant. We have to grow. But it has to be with careful consideration of what the elements are that make Bloomfield. The design of the proposed Robertson development, the enclave of Bloomfield, to me is the next step towards mediocrity. There have been many, many nicely designed condo developments within Bloomfield. The housing density and the tree removal of the Robertson development is not one of them. Bloomfield Township conducted a survey, which I'm sure you're well aware of, because you're part of it, to determine what the residents wanted in their township, and what was important to them. And green space and parks and places for families to gather were all really high on the list. This is a green space. And my concern is that green space, once it's developed, you never can get it back. I mean, there's, there's only so many trees and too many, so many houses that can replace them. As I said, I live in Bloomfield, Birmingham Farms, and the proposed development is on two sides of our subdivision. Oh, better hurry. It's now a heavily wooded 13-acre parcel that has pollution-grabbing vegetation, a nice cooling canopy of large trees that also mitigate the noise from the telegraph highway. And the woods are home to a whole variety of wildlife. They will have no place to go, except down the road, and they will not be assimilated into a new community. Okay. Noise.
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Steele, and I live on the corner of Sandalwood and Cedarbrook Drive with my fiancee at 6998 Sandalwood Drive. We're directly across from the proposed Robertson condo development. I echo the heartfelt concerns already shared, and want to speak not just as a resident, but as someone who came back here to build a future. We chose this neighborhood to start a family, to give our kids the kind of childhood we had growing up in this very area. That dream is now at risk. The demolition of our green space isn't just about aesthetics. It means more noise, more air pollution, and the loss of the natural barrier from telegraph road. With three years of unbearable construction, noise, dust, and disruption right outside our front door is not something families should have to endure. The added density will overwhelm our infrastructure, strain our aging underground water systems, and stretch local resources thin. These proposed high-density condos simply do not reflect the character or values of Bloomfield neighborhoods. This isn't smart or sustainable growth. It's a step in the wrong direction. What our community actually needs isn't another development, but more shared space. Bloomfield Township has few public parks, and this is our chance to change that. Let's invest in something that brings people together, not pushes them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. If there's no further public comment, we'll close public comment. And -- Yes, sir. Please come up.
Hi, Chris Gagnon, 6529 Cathedral Drive. I actually wanted to share more commentary today, but due to a lack of sufficient notification, I actually did not have time to fully articulate my thoughts. So, I may be back another day to share a little bit more, but I did want to maybe come at this from the perspective of, you know, taking a skim through the code of ordinances for the township. One that did stick out in particular that I'll share today, and again, I'll have some more another day, but is section 18-226. It is stated, and I quote, "The board further finds that the township is substantially developed, and that property owners in the purchase, improvement, and maintenance of their land have relied upon the continuance of the character of the neighborhoods in which their properties are situated." A quick compare of a bird's-eye view of our subdivision overlaid with the designed Robertson housing makes it clear that the character of the neighborhood would change dramatically. A handful of condo units alone would arguably reshape the character, let alone adding 38 units of high-density senior living, and wiping out many acres of green space. This would be a significant harm to property value, and it would be a significant damage to the daily living for many in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, if there's no further comment, up close, the public comment. But before we move on to the agenda item, Andrea, will you just come up to the microphone for a minute? I just, let's just run through the process of what happens after the design review board, review pick.
Absolutely.
And so, so that you're aware that this is just the beginning of where public comment really plays a part going forward. So, go through the process.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm Andrea Bibby. I'm the Director of our Planning, Building, and Ordinance Department. Just for a point of reference, understood that, yes, the, the villas or the enclaves of Bloomfield did have a meeting last week. It was, that was the Design Review Board. That is the very first meeting prior to any site plan going before ultimately the Planning Commission, as well as the other bodies. For the Design Review Board, we do not send out public notification. However, for Planning Commission, for future meetings, any resident who lives within 500 feet of that property will be getting a notice within the mail that will tell you the date and the time of that public hearing in which you are to, you can certainly attend, you can write in. There'll be information on that notice, and how you can communicate your concerns to the township, and make sure that that gets to the board members, so that they can hear your comments and concerns. So, I just want to, in regards to this specific proposal, we did send out notices last Thursday for the July 7th Planning Commission meeting, in which this will, this item will be presented. At that level, the Planning Commission is a recommending body. They will hear public comment, and then based on whatever, what they hear at that meeting, they will make a determination in terms of how they would process that application, whether they would, they could take action to deny, they could forward it on with recommendations or conditions. But then, from the Planning Commission, it would go on to, in this instance, there is another body, it's actually the same members of our Planning Commission, but they are the Wetland Board. In this instance, because this proposal does impact wetlands, there is, the township does have a Wetland Board. That also will require that 15-day public notice, that everybody within 500 feet will receive a notice. That is another opportunity in which you can come forward, and you can state your concerns regarding the proposal. And then, the next step, again, these are all assumptions that they move on at each one of these board levels. I just want to highlight at the high level of what the process is. After the Wetland Board, ultimately, that would be the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals, at that time, they will hear the variances that many of you have mentioned that would be associated with this proposal. That would, again, is another public hearing, another notification within the mail. And then, lastly, there would be Township Board. For Township Board is the only body that can approve the site plan as presented. So, again, another public notification, everybody within 500 feet. So, I just wanted to clarify that there's no lack of notification. It's just that the Design Review Board, historically, the township does not send out public notices in the mail for those meetings. My name is Andrea Bibby. I am more than happy to take any phone calls. I'm sorry, I don't think I'm having a conversation right now with members of the --
Right. This is the public comment, but --
But ultimately, I just want to note that there are multiple meetings to come. They will be public hearings, and there's decisions that will be made and considerations along the way. This is certainly just the very beginning of a very complex project. But again, we are more than happy to provide any information in our department that we're able to do.
And the agendas are all posted on the website, for both for the Board of Trustees, for the Planning Board, for the Zoning Board. Are there any other postings that they can watch for?
Wetland Board. But I think, I mean, as of right now, it's on the books at July 7th, 7 o'clock at night is the Planning Commission meeting. And that was, that was after the Design Review Board heard -- And that was, that was after the Design Review Board heard that proposal last week.
Right, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Is the Wetland Board meeting the same night?
Yes.
No.
Usually.
Good question.
This time it's not.
We're gonna, we're gonna have the Wetland Board and Planning Commission on separate evenings.
Okay. Thank you, Andrea. Kind of caught you cold there, but did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so I...
Can I make one comment before we go on? I just wanted to let residents know that, a bit of good news, you know? Your tax bills are being printed and will be in the mail by the end of the week. And you should look for those. They are payable starting July 1 through September 15, right? Okay. Don't wait to the last minute, but we are open on September 15 to accept the payment. And my advice is, don't mail it. Just either drop it off in our 24-hour Dropbox, bring it into the office, or pay online.
All right, thank you. So item number two, consider the consent agenda. Any comments or motions?
I'd like to remove item B.
Item B, okay. So Mark, we'll make that item 2A.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
A support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it passes. So we'll address item 2A now. Approve payroll vouchers for June 23. Mark?
Yeah, my comment from last week regarding public safety and the cash flow needs. I followed your recommendations. I submitted a request to Jason.
Yes.
He was on vacation.
He was. He just got back.
So I look forward to receiving the information.
Yeah, we talked, I talked to him today, and he'll, he's gonna, he'll start working on it. Yeah, he was on vacation. I'll ask who he was.
Okay, so my no vote still stands, so just go ahead.
All right, any other comments? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve item 2A. Support?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, six to one. Thank you. Item number three, the Police Department 2024 Annual Report, presented by our Police Chief, James Gallagher. Welcome.
Thanks for giving us a few minutes tonight to talk about our annual report. Congratulations. Yes, we love working with them. Real quick, Officer Heather Goldbach is our Community Relations Officer. She replaced Nick this year, so she, this was her first year doing the annual report. She did a phenomenal job. Seeing that she's had a busy week last week with the youth academy, I told her I'd come on the evening time this time and handle the report for her. So our 2024 Annual Report, just to remind our residents that our mission statement is to preserve the peace and protect our community with fairness, integrity, pride, and respect. And then our core values of integrity, respect, fairness, pride, and accountability are what we stand for. And if anybody's been in our police department, they know that these are in big vinyl letters down our hallways. That it's very important to us that while we may joke around with each other in the station, once that call for service comes in, there's a reminder of how we're gonna act and respect the residents of Bloomfield Township when we go out there. So last year, our call for service numbers. We were down about 5% overall for our call for service number. Our total call for service was about 24,905. The decline of that would be in comparison attributed also to the lack of manpower that we had. You know, being down at 1.13 officers last year. That number includes traffic stops. That number caused self-initiated field activity stops or investigations there. So that number, while it was down from a year prior, we also had several retirements in there that you can attribute that number to the decline for the overall call for service numbers. Again, we do a lot of public community service things that other communities don't offer. Our Vacation House Watch checks. Anytime somebody's out on vacation and they let us know, we will do several, you know, it depends on how long they're gone. But the winter months are pretty busy months with that. But we will walk around all the residents' homes when they're gone on vacation to, you know, check for many things. Obviously, signs of a break-in, but there's been many times, probably more so of water main breaks or things that are water breaks in their home that we come upon. We still do vehicle lockouts, which many agencies don't do anymore, and then 104 school security checks, which is actually low because we have two security officers in the schools all day. They don't, they don't count and pull numbers. Those are self-initiated school security checks that our officers go do. So for our call types, we're A, B, and C crimes. A being our highest, B being, you know, the middle-of-the-road type crimes, and C's being what we'd call our community-driven crimes or our service calls. For our Part A crimes, which is our big ones, murder, stockings, robberies, we were down significantly last year, about 16%, I think, overall with that. Same with our Part B crimes. Again, those are the ones that, if it's a hit-and-run accident, impaired driving, hit-and-runs, those are, those were slightly up. Again, some of that you can attribute, though, to the manpower, right? Drunk driving cases, or self-initiated stops on the road that just sometimes we're not there. The good news for us is that we just pulled down our applications offline for the first time and since I've been chief in almost three years next week, that we are hopefully gonna be fully staffed by April of next year. When I say that, it's because many of these individuals that we hired have to still go to the academy. We have three that started last week in the academy, three more hopefully starting in August. Then they have to go through that 18-week process and then our 17-to-20-week process internally. So hopefully by May of next year, that means we can bring back our traffic unit, which will be more of a directed patrol-type unit, where they'll supplement both. Their target will be traffic enforcement, but we can also use them if we have a high crime like we saw a year ago with our stolen autos. They can kind of break their day down to, you know, monitor traffic during the heavy hours and then doing some directed patrol stuff during the evening hours. So that'll be something to come, and our people will look very much forward to that. So our response to resistance would be what many people would be known as our use of force, but we call it our response to resistance. It decreased from, while our call for services decreased 5.4 from 2023, we responded to 24,905 calls for service. We initiated 2,075 traffic stops, and about 794 of those calls for service resulted in arrests. So that's, you know, once we take, once we intend to take somebody in custody, we are technically seizing them according to the Fourth Amendment. Our average for that use of force, this is all online. We document everything from, with accreditation. What was not included in the past was pointing a firearm at somebody. When accreditation came in 2019, we started taking, monitoring those numbers as part of that requirement. And so last year, I think we were up a little bit into those responses resistance. Some of that also has to do with the increased technology that we have, with flock cameras that we talked about coming up that we've put into the township, which have been a huge success for us. But that alerts us if a stolen vehicle or a wanted vehicle is coming into the township, where before we would not have gotten those results. That would just be luck of a traffic stop or luck of a thing. But with those license plate readers, and again, they only read a license plate. They don't run who the driver is. They can't tell us who's driving that car. They can't tell us how many times it's occupied. All it is is a vehicle description of the back of a vehicle with a license plate. Where that's important is if we can, we've been able to make arrests of individuals committing crimes in the township, and just a simple check of that license plate reader can give us a timeline of when those individuals were in the township. It just helps our case when the prosecution portion of it. But the increase or any of that would be, again, taken into account that when you make a felony stop on a wanted vehicle, for what I think could be wanted for assault of crimes out of another jurisdiction, you know, at the ti, at times, there's gonna be pointing of firearms. So all those numbers and all that stuff, we are very transparent with, and we put them right online. We continued our community involvement, many of the things that we're involved in in the last year. Again, with the Special Olympics, we have a huge support for the Special Olympics. I think we've proven that along the way. Last year, we did a donation gift card drive with our community. Heather and I in Shelby Township, several of the other agencies. I don't want to list them all because I may forget one. We went to Beaumont, and we hit every pediatric room in the Beaumont Hospital and gave gift cards to the families, whether they were there for a day and whether they were there for long term. It was really a moving moment. They also built a ramp for one of our residents in our south end who did not have the funds to build a ramp and had sudden medical emergencies that required wheelchair assistance. Again, we do all of our Boy Scout and Girl Scout tours. Last year, the big one for us was the amateur down at Oakland Hills. Took up a lot of our manpower. But we built great community involvement there, and we actually had a blast working down there. So again, all of our report can be, is published right online. It's online now. All of our reports, whether it's use of force pursuits or any other report there, which has much more detail. I think it's close to 50 pages of information from the police department. So, take any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Chief. Any questions? If not, nice job on the recruiting. It's wonderful to see these people coming in all of a sudden. It's like a whole wave of recruits.
The last couple of months have been good news, and let's hope they all successfully complete our process. And next April, we could be getting back to the police department more known to be with proactiveness.
Like you said.
We've been, you know, Supervisor McCready and I have been talking, and we have been putting, once a week or more if we can, overtime details into the neighborhoods. And I know in one section last week, just Section 9 alone, I think they wrote on Thursday, I remember if it was Wednesday or Thursday last week, but I think they issued 10 violations in a couple hours in that Hickory Grove area.
Yeah, with all this extra traffic we're seeing from 696, yeah. Chief came and said, let's add an extra patrol to help. And because what happens is a regular patrol will go to an accident or another issue, so yet we still gotta have the neighborhood. So thank you for setting that up.
Yes, and so far, we've been hopefully making an impact in the neighborhoods. Okay, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Okay, item number four, public hearing to consider site plan and special land use request by Mex Restaurant, 6675 Telegraph Road, presented by Andrea Bibby, our Planning Board Director. Welcome back.
Hi, good evening. So, good evening, Board. I have a proposal before you this evening. This is a site plan review and special land use for the existing Mex Restaurant located at 6675 Telegraph Road. You can see highlighted on your screen the location of the subject property, just immediately north of Country Club Drive on the east side of Telegraph. The property is zoned B3 and also has a P1 parking classification as a zoning parcel. So the proposal this evening is the applicant is seeking to expand the outdoor patio space, adding a 51-by-17-foot addition to the south of the building, which is highlighted in the darker gray shaded area on your screen. The purpose of this addition would make the total building area 6,090 square feet and allow for an additional 55 additional patrons to be served. The addition does not change any of the drive aisles or site circulation as the proposal has been reviewed and supported by our fire marshal. The proposed addition does require the installation of a new five-foot-wide sidewalk to continue to allow for pedestrian access to be able to access the site in the front door, which is located along the west elevation. So that will not change the circulation in that area. This, this site plan was previously approved, the Mex Restaurant, with a Class C liquor license by the Township Board back in December 10 of 2012. At that time, the outdoor seating was approved in 2013 by the Design Review Board, noting that any seating within the outdoor patio area should not take place after 10 o'clock at night. The applicant's proposed hours of operations are not proposed. The applicant's hours of per-operation are not proposed to change with this request. They have been previously approved that their existing hours of operation are 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday; 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Friday; and 12:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday; and 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Sunday. So with this, I provided you, the applicant actually has provided you an overview of the proposed addition of this outdoor seating area. With the addition, they are gonna be required to relocate one parking lot tree. You can see that also highlighted on the site plan on your screen. It's kind of the darker circle now. That'll be more towards the east elevation of the building. That has to be relocated to allow for the addition and the pedestrian sidewalk. With that, the request is rather straightforward. This is a approximately 890-square-foot addition, although we don't necessarily consider it an addition because it's not a fully enclosed building. So I do want to clarify that this is different, and we do look at this different than a interior space. This is still considered a seasonal outdoor area. But the current outdoor patio is rather small, and the applicant certainly sees an opportunity to provide a better outdoor environment for patrons, provided they have elevations that show an open, open ceiling as well as some decorative brick elements to kind of provide that privacy, but yet still get that feeling of the outdoors. And these are some renderings that have been provided. And then here, you can see pictures of the existing patio. Yeah. This did have an opportunity to go before both our Design Review Board and our Planning Commission. In both instances, it did receive a favorable recommendation and forwarding on to the Board of Trustees. I do want to note that this does not change any of the previously approved special land use criteria that was approved back in 2012 with the site plan itself. But we do have to call this out as a special land use because this is a restaurant with a Class C liquor license.
Wonderful.
And I do know that we have the applicant, Mr. Josh Humphries, in the audience today. If you have any questions for him particularly.
Why don't we open up for public comment? And then we'll come back, and then you can have the petitioner come up and address the board, okay? So at this time, if you have any thoughts or comments on this issue with Mex expanding their outdoor seating area, now is your time to come up to the microphone at the podium. If not, we'll close public comment and open it up to the board. And any questions from the board or if the petitioner would like to make a comment, please feel free to come up and introduce yourself.
Good evening, gentlemen, madam. Josh Humphrey, representing Mex, partner owner and chief operating officer. I just wanted to mention that one of the driving forces for the redesign was because, if you recall, prior to Mex, we had these big sweeping, open garage doors, and it created an indoor-outdoor feel for the existing patio. And when we did the remodel a couple of years ago, we attempted to do the same thing without those garage doors, but with sliding glass doors, and we failed. It feels like an alley on the patio now. So we're attempting to expand it out, open the ceiling a little bit more, breeze block instead of flush wall. And it just opens it up and makes for a better patio season for our guests. There's a finite amount of days to sit on a patio. It's either too cold for eight months of the year or too hot for five days like it is now. So we're trying to capitalize on that and take care of guests.
It looks very attractive. It looks a lot more appealing.
Thank you.
And yet, you don't feel like you're sitting on the edge of the parking lot?
Exactly.
Because sometimes, you know, outdoor seating, especially in COVID, you know, some places just kind of move tables out into the parking lot.
Sure.
So no, I think it looks very nice.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, Josh, you had mentioned at the Design Review Board, there's not going to be any heating elements in there. That's not the intent. And as I mentioned before, at the Planning Commission and Design Review Board, it really is very attractive as opposed to, I know right now it looks kind of like an alley. And now it looks like it's really a very attractive, desirable area to sit outside. So you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Will you be considering any shading elements since you're facing south and you have the glass wall?
Excellent question. Shading elements for the patio, I don't know if they're shown on these renderings, but on the east side, about 50% of the way, we have some bamboo material that would roll over the top to help shade some of the sun. It's not a rain protective or a ceiling or a roof of any kind, but it should help block some 60% of the sun or so with this bamboo material.
Yeah, it just kind of feel with the glass and south facing.
Yeah.
Then you get the reflection from the glass. And if you have low-eed glass in there, it's gonna add more heat to the outside. So it's gonna, it's not gonna get the return on investment that we'd like you to get.
You should see my HVAC bill.
So...
Okay, any further comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to that we approve the site plan and special land use as presented.
Support.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you all.
Well, I think we miss the season this year, so probably January for next year.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, item number five, consider approval of resolution authorizing Township polling places, presented by Katerina Yankee, our election specialist. Welcome back, Katerina.
Hello, good evening. So at the last Board of Trustees meeting, I met with you all and gave a presentation about precinct consolidation. And one of the things I presented on were our polling locations and how we can have a great opportunity to have better and more improved polling locations. In that presentation, we presented a list of our proposed polling locations. And we are back again tonight to ask if you have any questions regarding those locations. We're also asking you to approve the list of locations that are found in the memo in your packet.
Any comments or questions?
The last presentation was very informative and certainly made a lot of sense logically why the changes were necessary. And besides giving consideration to the residents and security, as I know was mentioned... And besides giving consideration to the residents and security, as I know was mentioned, I think the, the issues that were presented have been taken care of and I'm certainly very supportive.
Yeah, it just, it makes a lot of sense with the high turnout we had with early voting. Has really changed the whole picture, so I appreciate you bringing it to us.
Yeah, I echo what trustee Barnett and Murray have said. Again, your, the presentation was very thorough and any of our questions or worries were mitigated in that, so I appreciate that. It just seems to make sense. And again, you didn't rush to these conclusions. We utilized actual data and voter turnout information before we made any of these changes. So I appreciate what you and the Clerk's Office do. Thank you.
The motion will be to, for the polling places and as the backup as well?
Yes.
Yes, so we need both. Okay.
Would you like to make that motion, Mark?
Sure. Like to make the, make a motion to approve the recommended polling places, precincts one through 12 as outlined in the board packet, as well as the backup polling places one through 10 as outlined in the board packet.
Support. Support, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Katerina.
Thank you.
Passes seven to nothing. Item number six, consider approval of increase in water and sewer inspection fees presented by Noah Maholsky, our DPW Director. Welcome, Noah.
Good evening. Here to propose raising our fees for tap, for like raw parts that we provide to residents. And we're talking meters, I guess parts and services, meters, regulators, and then taps that we do for the township. I will note that these aren't all of the charges that we have, so we have left some charges the same as they have been since 2016. We're just updating the ones we have data on. So, and for the meters, we got in a contract with SLC that determined the meter pricing for our meter exchange program that was higher than the number we were charging, so we've updated that number to reflect that pricing. Similar with taps, we don't do underground work in-house on our own, our own workers. We outsourced that in the early 90s. And so we have to pay a contractor to come in, dig the hole, and we kind of have to take an average on those costs because sometimes you have to dig the hole across the road, sometimes roads pave, sometimes it's not. Depending on the tap size, that's gonna dictate the type of material that you have to put in the ground, that type of stuff. So we've changed, we kind of do research on our, on what we're spending on taps each year and we look for an average on that. And my staff has been asking me to increase these fees based on that research for a few years now. So we're basically losing money on taps, we're losing money on meters at this point. So that means that the rest of the system picks up that cost. And these are development costs because we replace the meters when they go in. So it's the first meter, so typically associated with development. Taps, new taps and abandonments are definitely associated with new developments. So my proposal is to update the prices as you see there, and then my plan would be to every five years, evaluate these things going forward so we don't have these drastic jumps and waiting, you know, 10 years in between when we do these things, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Noah?
I just have a comment. I did call Noah earlier today to kind of go through this, and not only was he open and willing to talk about it, we went through some of the numbers and understanding that there are some bigger, bigger jumps here. But the bigger jumps come from the fact that our ratepayers were actually offsetting development costs for a long time, putting more of a pressure on our rate. So our residents continue to ask us, find ways to reduce those rate increases. This is a way to do it, to ensure that we are not allowing our ratepayers that pay now to offset development costs. So I appreciate you and your team taking time to go through this and making sure it is equitable for everybody in our community. So thank you for that.
How much, how much additional revenue on average will these fees generate?
I, I can look back at the data, but that really depends on the development and the level of what we have going on, right, which is not a finite thing. So I'll have, I can pull some reports and send it to you on what we've spent on this for the last few years, which is kind of.
Is it 100 to 200 or?
200,000. I, I don't remember the line item out of the budget here. There's a, because we, these are revenues generated on the system that are accounted for in our budget under our revenue side.
There's no budget presented by water and sewer.
The operating tally shows how much we take in for these revenues, which would give me a basis to look at that number for you.
And you don't, you don't recall what that average is?
No, off the top of my head, I do not. And I don't wanna, you know, I can grab it off the website and I'll send it to you tonight.
Well, I think it would be important to understand the amount of revenue being considered to be brought in.
Well, it's not a revenue, we're looking to go even with the cost. What we bring in, a contractor, we're looking to not lose money on these services. We're, we take an average, which will, we're not looking to generate revenue.
Well, the Township's, since 2021, the fund reserves have gone from 9 million to 34 million for water and sewer. This past year, we have the October, or the March 31st quarterly report shows five point, I believe, over $5 million in additional revenue generated.
This fee does not generate a revenue, though. It's offset by a cost that we pay out to a contractor.
It generates revenue to pay an expense. Yes or no?
It's, it's a fee we charge for a contractor to come in and do taps.
Yes, and you charge the residents that fee. The revenue is in the budget.
It's offset by the charge.
It's offset by the chart. The revenue has to be collected. And overall, based on the quarterly results that were presented to the board, you have over $5 million extra last year. Your, the money coming in has increased, the fund reserves have gone from 9 to 34 million dollars since 2021. That's a lot of money, and you're saying you need more money to charge the residents.
Developers, these are development costs.
And that's fine, and the residents pay back into that system with their water and sewer rates, right?
I get it.
So my concern is, we have enough cash, there hasn't been anything presented to the board regarding a need for additional water and sewer funds. As a matter of fact, the Township Board has chosen not to collect investment income on the cash that you have. And la, the most recent audit, that was over $20 million after expenses went out for over two months. So if we're not going to go and, and collect those, and vet that investment income for water and sewer, and that's about $300,000 a year, and, but you want to increase these rates?
By ordinance, I am, it's a shall statement that I update these and I don't take a loss. I, I don't believe the Township's water system should be subsidizing development costs, and neither in our ordinance dictates that as well.
Are there any other fees that have not gone up other than these? What are they?
Yeah, there are inspection fees that we go out and do a physical inspection of a site.
That's for building inspection?
They covered our costs, so I did not have to increase.
Building inspection a few years ago, those fees went up.
No, it's not building inspection, this is engineering and water department inspections of sites.
That's a different department. You're right, but that's a different department.
Okay, but again, you have more than enough cash. The Township Board has chosen not to collect investment income, which you're not even asking for. You're not asking for investment on cash in hand. That's $300,000 a year to offset all kinds of expenses that are coming in, and the Township generated a lot of additional revenue last year according to the quarterly report. So you talk about offsetting costs, but we keep collecting more than what we really need.
I get that. What I'm trying to do is comply with our ordinance with these fees.
So, so let's go back to the.
I'll make a motion if you're ready for it.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the increase of water and sewer inspection fees as presented by our Director.
Support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, six to one. Thank you, Noah. Item number seven, consider approval of resolution revising the criteria established for issuing a Class C or tavern liquor license presented by Martin Brook, our Township Clerk.
Okay, in the packet behind item number seven is a, is a memo and the existing Township resolutions concerning Class C and tavern licenses and the revisions that are suggested. The reason is because of two things. One, the state law changed, so some of the provisions that we had concerning the reviews that we conduct here before issuing a Class C or tavern license have changed, and so the proposal would change, make those adjustments. Plus, an increase in the expected investments and that were in the previous resolution just were updated based on, you know, inflation. There's no, there's no special method to that other than an inflation adjustment. So if we want to increase those based on inflation, the numbers are in here, they go from 250,000 to 333,000 and 1.5 million to 2 million. You know, Class C are the type of license you get in order to serve alcohol for onsite consumption of any type, and the tavern license is just for the onsite consumption of beer and wine. So this is a, basically a housekeeping item to update a prior resolution concerning the the factors the Township Board would consider when issuing a new Class C or tavern license.
Thank you for presenting that and updating everything. It was nice going through the minutes, it was like going through mem, down memory lane. I'm ready to make a motion unless there's any concerns or make a motion that we approve as presented.
Okay.
Support.
Support, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to nothing, great, thank you, Martin.[1793.48]